This time I'll call to order the August 18th, 2025 County Council Meeting. Our first order of business is that I'll recognize the Honorable Tom Aldette from District One for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Loving God, as we begin this meeting, we open our hearts to receive your divine inspiration. Fill us with your Holy Spirit so that it may guide us by your wisdom and insight. Help us to think creatively, innovatively, thinking of solutions that align with your purpose. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We always like to see folks coming out from the community to participate in the county council meeting, so we appreciate you being here. We do not have any oath of office tonight. I will recognize Sheriff Reden now, who is going to help us as a council, to recognize Corporal Lawrence Strom for his service and retirement from York County.
Thank you. Thank you to the council and thank you to everyone else. Just, you know, first of all, it's rare that somebody makes it 25 years in this career, and especially if they do it at one place. And Corporal Strom was a long time on patrol. He spent time as a patrol sergeant and supervisor, but he also spent time on our mountain patrol and our dive team, which, if you look at those three things, call for a lot of time away from family, a lot of time away from home, a lot of missed things, and it's a commitment that's above just being a regular deputy, and a lot of those things have shown with what he's done. And it's, this is a small token, we had a little send-off for him, but thank y'all, but it'll never be enough to recognize what all they do in 25 years, but I want to thank y'all for having him up.
Corporal Strom, on behalf of the council, we very much appreciate your service and your duty to represent the county and the interest of the community. We appreciate the service that you've given. We hope that this next phase is something fun, something that you're going to enjoy, something your family's going to see more of your time, and we certainly do wish you well and wish you best wishes on that. You have earned the right to have the podium if you would like to speak or say anything.
That's okay.
Okay. If you don't mind, we would love to get a picture of you in front of the, if you can come forward with Sheriff. If you want to bring your family up, they're more than welcome to come up too. There it is. Oh, you didn't hear them. There's the clock. Oops, we got that. Let's go ahead and get the clock there too. We didn't do that very well. As a token of appreciation, the council gives our retirees a clock that has the dates of service with the county. Small token, but we do appreciate that.
Do we include batteries in this?
I don't know. I hope so.
Batteries in 30 years.
We now will hear from staff a presentation of York County organizational core values.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm excited to stand in front of you to demonstrate the strategic plan in action, how employees are bringing it to life together. An initiative under the high-performance goal was the creation of organizational core values. The manager's office led this effort with the help from every single employee. Every employee deserves recognition for their thoughtful feedback and participation in developing our organizational core values. I want to say a special thank you to the leadership team who led the core values development. These individuals have dedicated the past year in developing the process, helping develop the survey, helping get the word out, and at the end, helping develop the core values. They are, to my right, Chris Rice from your IT department, Ashley Fay from the HR department, Kendall Alton from your procurement department, Greg Susskind from the county manager's office, and also Michael Fernandez. He couldn't be here today, but he's the director of Public Safety Communications 911. The management and this team also created a focus group, and this focus group was developed of 50 individuals across the organization. Every department, every elected official, every judge, every appointed official was asked to provide up to three people to serve on this group to help us develop the effort throughout the entire organization. We called them our champions, and they helped champion this in their departments and helped us at the end develop the York County core values. Values you will see tonight, they're just not words on a wall, but they're the standards that York County employees want to be held accountable to. They remind us of who we are, what we stand for, and how we treat each other. Each of us has a role in making sure these values aren't just spoken, but lived out throughout the entire organization. To delve even further into our organizational values and to unveil them to the council and the public, Mr. Greg Susskind and Ms. Ashley Fay are going to come up to the podium and present them. Thank you.
All right. Evening, council. Going to talk a little bit about where we came from and how we kind of got to where we are for just a moment here. So I'm not going to go through this whole entire slide left to right, but just, it's kind of hard for us to believe here in the committee, the six of us that first met, that this has almost been a year since we started this process. It's been a lot of work, but it's also been a lot of fun, just to engage in this, to kind of get that kind of enthusiasm going for county employees, and to kind of figure out how this all came together. It's really been a fascinating journey for us, I think. Back a year ago, we met for the first time, tried to figure out how we're going to get this out to the employees, how we're going to conduct a survey, what that's going to look like, how we're going to measure results, and that sort of thing. And before we knew it, we got to the beginning of this year, 2025, that survey went out. Employees had about eight weeks or so to fill that out. We had paper copies, we had online copies of that survey as well, and in the end, more than 700 employees took part in it and gave us feedback. We thought that was a great number. We're really excited about that. The next several months was just working through how this would be, how this would be rolled out to employees and how it would be pieced together in a way that it would be meaningful to us as well. So that's kind of where we are now, and of course, now the exciting part of all this, the values themselves, that York County employees came up with and decided were the most important things, that they wanted to be seen as, how they wanted to be viewed by other employees and the public as well. This is what our county employees said: respect, dedicated, integrity, knowledgeable, and friendly. But of course, we didn't just want these to be just five words. We want them to have meaning and weight behind them. We wanted this to be something employees can grab a hold of and really just integrate into what we do every day. So each has a small little phrase. Under knowledgeable, it says ready-enabled. Under friendly, it says service with a smile, just ways we can have a quick kind of snapshot view of what this looks like. And under that, there's also a definition as well of each of those principles. Now, one thing you don't see up here, that we're also going to be rolling out to employees, is we spend a lot of time talking about how we're going to live this out, because, of course, if this just becomes a nice little laminated business card we stick in our wallet and never look at again, or some poster on the wall nobody sees, we haven't accomplished anything. So we really wanted to focus on how this becomes ingrained in what we do every day, both among ourselves and to the public outside of York County, York County employees as well. So we spent a lot of time thinking about ways that we can live it out, and there'll be presentations as we move forward in the coming weeks about how we plan to do that as well. So for the rest of this, and to talk about how it kind of came together in one piece, I'll let Ashley Fay finish off.
The design of our logo was intentional. The circle reminds us of unity, that every person is part of something bigger. The puzzle pieces symbolize the connection, each of us bringing something unique to our values. It shows that our strengths lie not in one piece of the puzzle, but in how we fit together as a whole. As Greg mentioned, how do we live our values going forward? From this moment forward, our values will be threaded into everything that we do. We'll see them reflected in our email signatures, in the language of our job postings, in marketing, in our new hire orientation, in the language of all of our trainings, and even how we recognize our employees for their great work. They will guide our daily decisions, shape how we collaborate, and set the tone for the culture we are building here at York County Government. Thank you.
Something I want to point out to council is, in the center of the logo, you will see excellence through professionalism. And as our group, when we got to the end, professionalism was one of the most highest-ranked values that the employees chose. And after we connected all the pieces of the puzzle and came up with the respect, dedicated, friendly, knowledgeable, integrity that our employees picked out through the survey, we knew professionalism was important to employees, and so was excellence. So we thought that excellence through professionalism encompassed all of the values, and that's why it's in the middle, because that's how York County employees want stakeholders to see us as excellence through professionalism. So the work doesn't stop here. There's definitely more to do. Now we need to embed the values throughout the organization. Like I said earlier, it's more than words on just a paper. It's about living these values, shaping these values, and weaving the values throughout the organization so that we can see a lasting culture change throughout York County Government. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. I know that one of the strategic goals that the council had was to really focus on what is our job. Our job is to serve you, is to serve the people in this community, and to do that with the highest degree of professionalism that we can. And this is one of those steps that flows from the strategic plan. It's going to be implemented, and we certainly aim for York County to have the highest degree of professionalism in the state. So thank you for that information. We appreciate that. We move now to our public forum session. This is an opportunity for individuals to come and address council before our meeting starts. A few rules that we do lay out is that if you're here to speak on a matter that is a public hearing item, we're going to ask you to wait until the public hearing item comes up, because you're not limited in the time that you can speak, and your comments will be more, will be connected to the item instead of it being disjointed from the beginning of the meeting to the middle. So if you're here on a public hearing item and I call your name, if you would just let me know, and if you can wait until the public hearing section of that to speak, that would be most helpful. When you come forward, if you'll please state your name and give your address before you start speaking, and since we have limited time for this, it's up for the first individuals that come, and it's two minutes an individual. I hate cutting people off, so if you'll pay attention to the screen, it will let you know when your time is cut. And if you can notice that before I do, then that makes my job easier. I would just ask that you do that. Also, if you would keep your comments to the issue that you're here to speak about, not personalizing it or making attacks, because this is not an opportunity for council to defend itself or for county management to address you. We don't answer questions here. We just listen to you. All right, so first up is Ashley Horn.
Hi, my name is Ashley Horn, and I live in Regent Park in Fort Mill. I'm here tonight to request the recognition of Attorney Stafford J. McQuillan III, who is currently the attorney representing the York County Board of Zoning Appeals in the appeals case of Sylfab Solar. As this council is well aware, the BZA unanimously ruled 5-0 that solar cell manufacturing is not allowed in a light industrial zone. Sylfab Solar and Exeter filed a motion to appeal this ruling in circuit court. Through many long-drawn-out motions, court filings, failed mediations, the impacted property owner that made the original BZA request intervened in the case, and a court date was set for August 4th, 2025, more than a year later. The attorney representing the intervenor, who made a motion to dismiss Sylfab's appeal, sat on one side of the courtroom while Sylfab and Exeter appellate attorneys sat on the other side and were joined by Mr. McQuillan, the outside counsel to the BZA that this council authorized taxpayers' funds for. As a taxpayer and citizen, this is deeply troubling. The BZA deserves proper representation of their decision. Instead, they get counsel who physically chose to side with the appellate, who are actively ignoring the county government's ruling, that seeks reeks of impropriety and bias and could impact the court's decision. When the judge asked Mr. McQuillan if he had any arguments to make, he replied, "Your Honor, we're staying neutral on this. We are Switzerland." The BZA did not act like Switzerland on May 9th, 2024. In World War II, Switzerland turned a blind eye to a mass genocide of millions to enrich themselves. The BZA stood up for the health and safety of their community, the polar opposite. Finally, it's important to council know that Mr. Brandon Gaskins, attorney of Sylfab, is individually a co-defendant with Mr. McQuillan, who is also a member of the Berkeley County School Board. In 2022, Mr. McQuillan is alleged to have wrongfully fired both the superintendent and the school legal counsel, who was also later replaced by Mr. Gaskins. This is viewed by the public as a conflict of interest between Gaskins and McQuillan and one not being taken lightly. The public believes Mr. McQuillan should recuse himself as counsel of the BZA and instead allow the BZA to collectively decide who best represents their interests, not York County staff. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Apparently, our timer is not working, so I'm just going to hit the timer button on my phone until you get it fixed. Lucille Hinton.
Good evening. Again, my name is Lucille Hinton. I'm representing the residence from Eagle Point Road. That's in York District.
Can you please give your address?
It is 2492 Eagle Point Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
We want to get the road widened enough, so I have pictures I gave to Karen. I don't know if you all received them yet. The picture shows where you're entering the road, only one car can come out. It's 10 family resident there, so each family has between two or three cars. That's 13 people on the road. From that stop sign back to 50 yards, we don't have a way to move over because there's ditches on both sides. There's a lot of transportation coming in and out. As you see, on yesterday, I almost got hit in the back trying to come into my road, and a FedEx driver was coming out. There's bushes where you can't see what's coming out the road. From the stop sign back 50 feet is where it needs to be widened. So we really want help so no one can be seriously hurt. And we talked to the owner. The owner said they would be willing to give the footage, but it had to be purchased. We need help, because seriously, we don't want anyone hurt coming out that road. There's a lot of drivers now. So please help.
Thank you, ma'am.
And you got the pictures, so you can see the ditches. You can see where we're trying to come in and out. You even see the UPS, the FedEx driver. So please help us. We need help.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have the pictures.
Before someone gets seriously hurt.
Thank you. Frank Jernak.
Good evening, council members. My name is Frank Jernak. My wife Nancy and I live at 2591 Lower Assembly Road here in Fort Mill. I'm speaking tonight about the July 10th public meeting regarding the Sylfab Solar approval process. At that meeting, it was claimed that zoning compliance was granted through civil construction plant approval, and that the window for challenge had passed. Under York County Code, that is inaccurate. It appears to be an attempt to bypass the code and landlord's property rights. Construction plan approval is not the same as zoning compliance. Let me repeat that. Construction plan approval is not the same as zoning compliance. York County Code, Section 153.92, states that such a plan must comply with and is distinct from zoning and other applicable regulations. Even if there had been an administrative decision, a legal mechanism for appeal still exists. The York County Board of Zoning Appeal is specifically tasked with reviewing alleged errors in administrative decisions under zoning ordinance. Despite this, an appeal was filed in March this year challenging how zoning compliance was interpreted for the Sylfab project. It was rejected outright by staff contrary, contrary, to the rights established by the code. That denial was then upheld by a narrow 3-2 vote on July 10th, denying the appellate the right to be meaningfully heard. This process denied the community both a fair appeal path and proper oversight, especially for a project, especially for a project dealing with hazardous materials.
Thank you, sir.
Near homes and schools.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me?
Thank you. The two-minute time is expired. Thank you. Yes, sir. Next, we have Ryan Emery. Okay. Chris Kellogg. Okay, no worries. Patrick Traynor.
This is just to talk about the project?
If you're here about a specific rezoning or something, that's on public hearing, if you can wait until that is called, you won't be limited in your time. Okay? All right, that concludes our public forum session. I do want to remind folks that when it comes to the Sylfab issue, that's in court, and the issue regarding the rezoning is before the courts for determination. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda is approved. We move now to our first public hearing item. Case number 25-24, tax map number 595000135, to rezone from ID to GC, 7.2 acres in District 4.
Good evening. Thomas Newell, long-range planner. So the applicant is seeking to rezone from industrial development to general commercial. This is a space in a jurisdiction donut hole in Rock Hill. So the intention is to build a self-storage facility with space for boat and RV storage. This is just off the main street. So this is the submitted site plan. A lot of the development will remain on the west side of the parcel. It will reuse a structure that preexists in building these self-storage pods in the back. The parcel, as it is now, is fairly vacant aside from derelict structure. This stretch of West Main Street actually has a lot of industrial development here. You can see a lot of the parcels on this side of the street and on the north side are a mix of commercial industrial developments. And again, because this is jurisdiction donut hole, we're looking at municipal infill, where we like to defer to City of Rock Hill's future land use plan. I apologize for the very yellow map, but it's very clearly neighborhood residential. Their neighborhood residential district is very similar to ours. We're looking for urban suburban developments. The red line that cuts across there, that's part of their 2033 redevelopment plan for Cherry Road, which is kind of encompasses everything to the south of it and excludes this parcel. Staff does recommend approval of this despite it not being consistent with City of Rock Hill's future land use map. We see it as this stretch of Main Street is predominated by industrial and commercial uses, and the proposed general commercial use is much less intense than the current industrial development use, and will allow this property to better serve the surrounding community. And of course, it will remove another parcel from the legacy UD district. Planning commission also recommended approval.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions before we open public hearing? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion closed.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
I want to make a motion to defer this for another two weeks.
A still first reading. You still want to do a deferral?
Yep.
Second.
Motion and a second to defer. All is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Matter will be referred to the next council meeting. We move down to item number two. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 25-29, tax map number 738000007 and 8, to rezone from RMX 10 to RUD, 11.49 acres in and 8, to rezone from RMX 10 to RUD, 11.49 acres in District 7.
So, the applicant is looking to rezone from residential mixed 10 to rural development. This space is just outside Fort Mill, off Dobie's Bridge Road, and it encompasses both of these parcels here that you see. The space inside Fort Mill on this side of Dobie's Road is also very, very vacant. These two parcels actually encompass four separate dwellings, as it is now. So, the intention is to take those four dwellings, recombine these two parcels, and build an event venue, specifically a wedding venue. The site plan shows the applicant intends to maintain the four structures that already exist on the lot, as well as the pond. The only new structure, well, structures, will be both the event venue, which you can see in red, as well as the appropriate structures for the buffer. So, our zoning, we have this for residential mixed 10, along with a lot of the space of Fort Mill. However, you do see there is RUD present across Dobie's Bridge Road. And our future land use map shows this as neighborhood residential, which, again, looking for urban and suburban development. This map just gives some more context to the space. Dobie's Bridge Road has some other non-residential uses off of it. You can see that a lot of suburban development breaks off of it and branches away from it. But you would use it such as a market, office space, and a church. Staff recommends approval of this request despite not being consistent with the comp plan and future land use map. We see that a lot of the adjacent properties are already zoned for rural development, and there are other non-residential uses across Dobie's Bridge Road. RUD is a much less intense district than the current RMX 10 zone, and this will also help remove some residential curb cuts from Dobie's Bridge Road. Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Brandon Pridemore, 1186 Stonecrest Boulevard, TDK, South Carolina. Thank you, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. I'm here on behalf of the Kellogg family, Chris and Carolyn, who are sitting behind me here, and several of their, I think, residents in the area that are in support of this. Just by show of hands, if you'll let them know you're here, folks. They've done a lot of homework. This is a personal investment that the Kelloggs would like to do, recognizing the growth constraints and school constraints that are in Fort Mill currently. They're proposing to downzone themselves, create a space I think that's much needed for given the growth of the area, providing a small event venue, and preserving the rural character of that area. As a matter of fact, they're talking about removing a couple of the homes up front, creating a better screening, you know, preserving the nature aspect of that property. And then, as well, too, a small event venue likely is not going to, you know, compete against the peak hour traffic. It's going to be more of a evening and weekend type thing, so we think it's a great use. Staff did a good job of summarizing everything else related to it. We've got a lot of restrictions we've got to meet, and we're here for any questions you might have later in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Good evening to the council. My name is Chris Kellogg, and my wife Carolyn is seated behind me. We are the owners of the property. Subject property also referred to as Epps Farm. And Brandon has done a nice job of summarizing. I just wanted to, I know you've got a busy agenda tonight, we just wanted to share a few comments, a little bit of the vision, and some of the, kind of, the homework behind this to give you a little bit of an idea. Each of you should have received a proposal, kind of, vision statement from us, if you had the opportunity to review that. I've spoken to a few of you. Obviously, Tom and Debbie, Debbie is our representative, and not just as council people, but as residents of Fort Mill can appreciate that corridor, how busy it is, and all the development that's going on. So, appreciate their feedback. My wife Carolyn and I are retired real estate professionals. I'm not sure how long we'll be retired with this project, but we've been here since COVID. We've been developing projects throughout the Carolinas for fifty-plus years combined, so we've got a lot of experience in building a lot of different types of projects. And we've been driving our kids to, you know, Banks Trail and now Cataba Ridge. We've got a junior and a senior. We drive by this property every day. We live just about a half a mile away, and we just drive by and think, what an incredible piece of green space. It's rolling pastures that have been generationally preserved for cattle. There's been, not currently operational, but there's a pond that's there. It's rolling hills. It's just a beautiful, beautiful piece of land. And as developers who have built a lot of stuff, we'd really like to save some stuff and do something that we think would be more amenable to the community, provide a great asset to the community as a gathering space, which is much needed on our side of town. I don't have to share with any of you. You'll understand that over the last six years of development, the growth in Fort Mill is explosive. There's tremendous development, not only in our corridor, but around this part of the county, and we think that we can do something better, something that's got a higher purpose. We are flanked on either side, kind of, bookended by two developments that you'll most likely be aware of. Of course, there's a Harris Teeter Cataba Ridge retail development taking, I don't know how many thousand square feet, roughly fifty acres of property, just up the road, a half-mile from us at the corner. And we're flanked on our left side by the Crosswinds Development, now reserved, I think the name is Williams Reserve. And that property is another forty-five to fifty acres of, if approved by the town council, approximately four hundred-plus units, DU's of attached, unattached, single-family, and age-restricted properties. So, we're going to have roughly a hundred acres of development within our half-mile of where we live and to the edge of the corner of the road with Dobie's Bridge. That's a lot, and I can tell you, my wife and I have built those kinds of retail developments and centers before and houses before. We just see, you know, we're not going to save the entire world by taking over this twelve acres and conserving it and doing something a little bit better, but we think it's a start. And the other thing that's important to us is that we can use less resources and put less pressure on the infrastructure that's there. We're not going to be putting additional homes in and burden on the school system. We think our daily trips are going to be weekends and nights. It's not going to impact a lot of the high-density traffic times. And what's really cool is that we'll continue using the septic and water, the wells that are there, not-go-on system. We're also going to do geothermal, solar, and rain collection, water collection, to be able to do this sustainably. So, we're currently working with Clemson University and a cooperative extension locally on the ecosystem that pond, so we're introducing new native plants and species, crops. We're going to restock the pond. It's going to be pretty incredible, I think. And we will correlate this venue with the agricultural context and intent of this property. That's really important to us, is that it's preserved for the right reasons. That'll mean we can host events in this building that would allow us to tie the agricultural and classroom stuff back to it. We can have corporate events, employees that come out to fish in the pond and have a meeting in the building. We'll have, you know, churches and schools that have events constantly that are looking for space because it's much needed on our side of town, so we think that's going to be a great amenity. And one thing that could be a very neat, cool factor in terms of sustainability is we're working with a builder who potentially will build us the first 3D-printed building of its type in the Carolinas, which would be a pretty incredible wow factor, I think, for this property, and do it in a way that's sustainably built and developed. So, that all said, that's a lot of information, but we wanted to share with you a little bit about this vision. We think that there's, Carol and I are uniquely situated, positioned here with our experience to deliver something that could be a pretty wonderful asset to the community that we think Fort Mill residents will be proud of, and not add yet another housing development to the road, which is, you know, we can do that under current zoning, but that's the last of our intentions. So, that being said, we did bring people behind us that are representing it only because they live in this corridor, and it's something that they see as being positive in the environment. And Brandon, of course, is available for any technical questions, but just wanted to thank you for your time and appreciate you letting us share the vision with you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All is in favor.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you, Chris, for reaching out. We do, we appreciate the conversation, and what you all are doing is something great in the area. I tell you, you're setting up a prototype we'd love to see in other parts of the county. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. We move now to our third public hearing, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 25-30, tax map number 714000019 and 20, to rezone from AGC and OI to ID, 28 acres in District 7.
So, the applicant is seeking to rezone from a combination of agriculture conservation to, and office institutional, to industrial development. The space is, in the incorporated space north of Fort Mill, along I-77. Looking at the aerials, you can see a lot of vacant space here. The applicant is proposing to repurpose the existing structure and build a utility operations center, which will include uses such as warehousing, office space, and outdoor storage. It's currently zoned office institutional and agriculture conservation. The large parcel to the south and the sliver that's north of Schlumberger are actually the single parcel. The small, kind of, middle parcel is its own thing. Future land use map, this is all I-77 corridor employment, as expected, as most of the properties below I-77, and so we recommend approval. It's consistent with the comp plan, future land use map. Industrial development is exactly what we're looking for in the employment corridor, and it has large natural buffers and ample vegetation to obscure the site from any of the surrounding parcels, and Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Good evening. Jimmy Sprouse, 231 College Avenue, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I'm president and CEO of Buell County Natural Gas Authority. This is property we purchased back in April, and we are trying to create a presence in Fort Mill, so we saw this as a great opportunity for us to be located in pretty much central of the Fort Mill-TK region. We serve seventy-six thousand customers in York and Cherokee County. Almost thirty thousand of those are in Fort Mill and TDK. So, this would give us a presence up there, emergency equipment to respond to damages on the system, and really better service in that area. So, we just appreciate your time, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, looking at the district.
I apologize. I didn't think you were going to...
Well, no, I wanted to make a motion with the Planning Commission recommended approval that included the request that we consider adding the condition that the applicant voluntarily record a deed restriction that limits the types of ID uses permitted on the parcels. So, I would like to add that to the motion.
I withdraw my motion, if this can be allowed as the first motion, and I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second has been withdrawn. We can recognize that as a motion.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to state my dissatisfaction with our zoning code that requires us that every time we do a rezoning that we have to put deed restrictions on there, and that we are arbitrarily picking and choosing what the zoning code is going to allow on each individual property that we rezone. We have done that ever since I got on here eight months ago, and we continue to do it, and it just shows that our zoning code is completely flawed and needs to be fixed. You know, I don't wish, you know, the main thing is, is that this should have never been through to industrial zoning just to get outdoor storage. Having outdoor storage in industrial zoning only is creating a lot of havoc throughout our county. I've seen it. It's come up quite a few times, and so I really want to get that fixed, because this whole deed restriction thing is a nightmare, and it's going to become a bigger issue in the future for future councils and for our staff at the county.
Okay. I don't deny that. I agree with you. Actually, this kind of took me by surprise, and the thing that does concern me is the fact that it is going to industrial from AGC. So, that's the only reason why I mentioned it, and I'm not really thrilled with this, to tell you the truth, but that's kind of where I stand. I don't know. Other comments?
What are some of the things we're restricting?
That's what I think we need to talk about.
And I just want to piggyback off of what Andy mentioned. I guess there's no perfect zoning, and I think we start putting these deed restrictions and certain restrictions is because there are certain things in certain districts, I mean, certain zonings that down the road or in the immediate future, the immediate area may not want it right now, but I think when we put those restrictions on there, nothing lasts forever, and who's to say that fifteen years down the road, somebody may want to have some of the things that we've blocked out or blocked passage to? And if that person's ever trying to sell that property or it changes hands, and somebody says, well, I'd like to put a gas station, I'd like to put a XYZ there, and they go pull a deed and say, wait a minute, that got blocked out. Then here's that owner stuck with a piece of property that somebody wants to buy, they can't do what they want to do with it, and now we have to try to go back and unravel the yarn so that the person can sell the property. But there's no perfect zoning that we can have that's going to be a one-size-fits-all, that everybody's going to agree to right now and forever in the day. So, I think we need to be careful how we're putting certain future restrictions on certain things. But if the owner's willing to do it right now, I guess that's the only thing that really matters, what the person's wanting to do right now, but it's no fix to some things that's in different zonings that may not fit overall. But if the owner's willing to do it, I have no problem with it.
So, as you read through the staff notes on this, by the way, they made the recommendation to not put any restrictions on this. If you look in section H?
I'm sure they don't.
Any other discussion on the motion that's on the table? All is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving now to item number four, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 25-31, tax map number 18700003215800011 through 16. Rezone from RUD to AGC, 9.62 acres in District 3. Did I read that correctly? Is that through 16, or is it just 16? Is it just 16? I think it's just 16. You can correct it on second or third if there's an issue with that.
So, the applicant is seeking to rezone from rural development to agriculture conservation. The intent is, you can see on the map, the blue parcel is not being rezoned, it is just the ones in red. These three around the sides are currently zoned rural development, and the large blue one is agriculture conservation. The idea is to rezone and have them all recombined to then later redistribute. So, you can see currently some residences on these kind of peripheral lots. The large central one is exclusively used for timberland, as it is. You can see along Allwood, you have rural development, and then most of this is agriculture conservation, and future land use map has this all as agriculture. Staff recommends approval, as it is consistent with the comp plan and future land use map, and AGC directly befits what's expected within this designation. Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I guess this would be approved with the condition under H1. The property must be combined so that no parcel, if y'all read that... The property must be combined so that no parcel, have you all read that?
Motion's on the table as to approve as is, so...
As is not taken, staff's recommendation into mind in Section H one?
That's not on the agenda that I'm looking at, so I don't know what you're referring to.
I'm reading the notes, staff notes.
In the, in the body of the, what's before the public hearing, there isn't a... Okay, but there isn't anything on our, typically if there's a, if there's a deed restriction or some kind of... It's approved as what was submitted to council, so is there clarification from management?
Yeah, this is a standard recommendation that we have for all parcel re combinations that are part of rezoning that it be recorded within ninety days. It just didn't make it onto this final slide. Apologies for that.
So Jonathan, do we need to add that or we catch it second?
Either way, you'd like to slice it, as long as it's there for, for third reading, I think that would be fine.
Do you want to just amend your motion to include that?
It's just about to record.
Basically, it's just recording and recombining. I mean...
Well, I'll amend motion to...
In the second or agrees. Who was the second or?
I was second.
All right, okay. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to item number five, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number twenty-five dash thirty-two. Tax map number three nine seven zero 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 one. To rezone from RSF forty to RUD, three point four five acres in District, District Three.
The applicant is seeking to rezone from Resilience Single Family Forty to Rural Development. This is a parcel just outside of the city of York. So the intention is to allow a manufactured home on the property. It is currently, along with all the other parcels within this subdivision of Windsor Woods, zoned for RSF forty. And future land use, I thought it kind of hard to tell on the map, I apologize, but this area is single-family residential, and beyond Park Place Road and along York Highway is all rural residential. Staff recommends approval. While it's not directly consistent with the comp plan, future land use map, we do see that a lot of the properties nearby and along York Highway are predominantly zoned for rural development. The neighboring residences within the same subdivision are well above the expected RSF forty minimum lot size. Like the next smallest one is an acre and a half. And the proposed large lot residential space is compatible with those neighboring properties. Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Any questions for staff?
Can you go back a couple of slides, yeah, that one? So how big is this parcel? You said acre and a half?
The next smallest one in this subdivision is an acre and a half. This one is three and a half.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to our final public hearing item. Council to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-five of the York County Code of Ordinances to establish a local vendor preference requirements set out in New Thirty-five, Section thirty-five point oh oh nine H, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council, TR Sheffield, Field of Procurement Director. As you know, staff was tasked to present viable options to the council for the adoption of a local vendor preference. Staff took that action and properly vetted viable options through the Finance and Operations Committee, as well as individual research and a survey of registered vendors for this process. As a result, the ordinance that's pending before you at this time, we feel is the appropriate ordinance to implement such a local vendor preference. Just to give you a few highlights in regards to the preference. The preference is for services, supplies, and construction up to twenty-five million dollars. The lowest consideration would be fifty thousand dollars, which is our bid threshold amount. So there are tiers. Council requested that we actually have tiers for the preference, up to five percent. At five percent, the preference starts at fifty thousand dollars to ten million dollars. And it goes up to one percent preference. The higher the actual bid amount goes, up to twenty-five million dollars. So in essence, with this preference, local vendors would have the opportunity to bid on projects if they were not the lowest bidder, if they were the second lowest bidder. They have an opportunity to match the local non-vendors' bid up to five percent, depending on the actual bid amount. So that could range from a preference from twenty-five hundred dollars to twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this is what is before you this evening. We also have, I've indicated before, that this does not apply to state and federally funded projects or funded projects. This is for York County's fines.
Thank you, Ms. Sheffield. Any questions before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, so more of a, just a comment real quick that you all did a great job getting this together and the Finance Committee working together as we worked through the details on this thing. So this is an opportunity for us to really support our local businesses in the area and, and, and driving that economic development opportunity for them. So, so I'm excited to get this world out. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this change? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move close. Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Roddy?
I just want to say, I'm pleased to see this type of ordinance get on track because I've been mentioning this for several years now. But luckily for me and the community, we have some willing council members who saw the need to, to put something like this in motion. And I think it's gonna really help some of our local guys get into, more into the bidding process. Because for a long time, a lot of people felt like they couldn't get the opportunities. And I'll go on record to make sure I say and be perfectly clear. We're not giving anything to anybody. We're creating some opportunities, and we're still gonna get the lowest possible bid. So don't get, hope no one gets it misconstrued that we're just gonna be paying more to use local guy. That local guy still has to match that local, that low bid. So we're still getting the lowest bid for the work. We're just creating an opportunity for that local guy to match that lowest bid if he falls within a percentage or a few percent of that lowest bid. So we're creating some opportunities, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how this evolves into more people bidding, more jobs staying local, keeping more of our York County tax dollars within our local borders. So really excited about the opportunities.
Yeah, thank you, Bump. One of the things too, that I think it's important that the public knows is that there is a, on our website, there is a place where, as a business, you can register, and then you'll be notified of projects that are coming up. And I think that, I know we had talked about maybe doing some type of marketing on that to make sure everybody's aware of that, et cetera. But again, I just want to bring that to the public. You can go online, you can register your business, and you'll be notified when projects come up.
All right, any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Just one quick comment, that I support this wholeheartedly. I think I brought it up, but nonetheless. Sometimes these have unintentional consequences that future councils may have to come back and revisit. This could happen in other areas where you have local contractor preference that causes other contractors sometimes not to come in and bid. So if that were to happen in the future, this may be something we'd have to go back to revisit. Just, just a future comment. Still support it, though.
I think this was supported by management, and it was put together with a lot of balancing in mind, trying to make sure that you don't skirt away competitive bids and... But that you create opportunities, because when you invest locally, it pays dividends for, for time to come. And I think Bump made the best point, it's still lowest bid. I, I do think it would be important to put this on the radar for management and Finance and Operations Committee to evaluate this on an annual basis to see if it's impacting any of the bids that we're getting so that we can address that. And so I would ask that, that management take note of that and that that be done on, in the future.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to Old Business, item number one. Council to consider third reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter one fifty-five, zoning code, subchapter B, zoning districts to convert AGC one and Rural Development one to legacy district status, thereby prohibiting the expansion of existing districts and the creation of new such districts. To amend, subchapter C, use regulations to allow certain additional special exception uses in the AGC and RUD districts, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move down to item number two of Old Business. Council to consider third reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter one fifty-four, Land Development Code, Subchapter A, introduction to modify the family exemption land division, to amend Chapter one fifty-five, zoning code, Subchapter B, zoning districts, to revise the minimum lot width on arterial roads in certain zoning districts, and to revise the setbacks in AGC and AGC one districts. To amend, Subchapter C, use regulations to revise the accessory use conditions for shipping containers to provide for public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to item number three, rezoning action. Consider second reading, case number twenty-five dash twenty-two. Tax map number six five nine zero 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 two two three. Rezone from RSF forty to LI, one acre in District One.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion and a second to deny.
So there, we got it, we passed it first reading here to give us an opportunity to investigate it more. You know, and again, tried to make it identify if there's any other businesses or surrounding areas that where this would fit in. And again, we just couldn't come across the line on that. Again, we gave it a, a, a very good effort. Again, that's why, again, I wanted to make sure not to deny it the first time around. So again, just want to make that statement. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, and I would like to just say that this is another one of those items of the zoning code that I, I feel like we shouldn't have had to go to a light industrial for this type of facility and for this type of business, and it just reinforces my comments from earlier.
So, so real quick, Madam Chair, on that, y'all moved rather quickly earlier in approving two rural zoning items. I do want to make, make clear, those are things that y'all assigned and said you wanted to fix in code. And that would be my recommendation here, as I heard some of y'all make statements earlier. If there's something about the code that you want to fix, let us know. We, we can't do anything if you don't tell us. And so I would encourage you to assign, make an assignment to the Planning and Zoning Committee if there's, if there's something that you have an idea about. I do think, as you've seen from staff, we worked hard with the Planning and Zoning Committee to come up with those two items related to rural zoning. I think those are things we can all be proud of, and we're ready for those next items. And that's what I would encourage y'all to do, is let us know what we can do to help. Thank you.
To that point, and I think that it's important that for the next, for the past three years, and I've, I've requested this, for staff to take a look at what are the reasons why rezonings have had to come in front of us and to evaluate and analyze, should we have had to do that? And was it something that ended up costing an applicant way too much money that routinely gets approved by the, by, by the council? So I think, to the extent since the, since the offer was made, I do think it's incumbent upon management and staff to take a look at. I hear your point about assigning very specific things, but the strategic goal was to simplify the code and to, to be more user-friendly when we're approaching these things. And frankly, if, if we're seeing over the past three years that a rezoning wasn't necessary or, you know, and that was a pattern, I think that's probably going to be indicative of something that we want to take a look at. But that would require some analysis to be done. But I definitely hear what you're saying, and, and council certainly has to direct those things when we look at committee assignments.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Item number one, a new business. Council to provide authorization to apply for and accept if awarded a South Carolina Coordinating Council Economic Development Set Aside Grant, C twenty-five forty-eighty-one, for Project Cross, the amount of six hundred thousand dollars. No local match required.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just go comment. This is a great opportunity for downtown Rock Hill. They're gonna bring in, I think, seventy-eight individuals are gonna be moving into the area. They'll end up hiring eighty-one more, and I think the average wage is about ninety thousand dollars a year. So this is the type of headquartered location that we need in downtown Rock Hill.
Yeah, I agree. Absolutely.
All those in favor of the, favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number two, council to adopt an inducement resolution to the state, to state the commitment of York County to enter into a fee-in lieu tax agreement with a company known to the county and identified for the time being as Project Cross, to provide the general terms of the fee-in lieu of tax agreement to identify the project for purposes of Fee-in-Lue Tax Simplification Act, to state the commitment of York County to place the project's subject property in a multi-county industrial park, multi-county park, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Council to consider, item number three. Council to consider first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in-lie of tax agreement buying between York County and one or more companies identified for the time being as Project Cross, whereby York County will enter into a fee-in-lie of tax agreement with Project Cross, providing for the payment of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for special source revenue credits, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial/business park and other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. I read that pretty good, didn't I?
You did.
I'm doing, running, rolling right through it. Committee and other reports, Economic Development Committee meeting, Chairman Watts-Huckabee.
Yes, Madam Chair, we met on July the tenth. Council members Cox and Aldette were in, were in attendance. Our Economic Development Director provided us a summary of actions. He provided a presentation highlighting three capstone projects that York County could pursue based off workshops, conversations, and surveys with York County Council. The Economic Development Committee approved the recommendation of these project concepts and made the motion to present these projects at a future council meeting or workshop. He also presented the framework to the Economic Development Committee for establishing a vision of projects aimed at encouraging economic development opportunities that align with council priorities. The priorities focus on targeted impacts and include three capstone projects that the Economic Development Department will integrate into its strategic plan. The targeted impacts are focus on high-wage projects, community visions and investments, small business support, workforce development, enhanced mobility and quality of life. Director Miller also outlined three capstone projects that incorporated and targeted impacts approved by council. These capstone projects are, and these are new, Project Trail Mix, which is enhancing mobility and placemaking through countywide trail networks in partnership with the Carolina Thread Trail. We talked about that a little bit at our last council meeting. Next crop, York. This is strengthening the agricultural economy and local food system for sustainability and growth. And then a digital Main Street, empowering small businesses through digital marketing, social selling, and unified branding. The Economic Development Committee approved the capstone projects and recommended holding a workshop for council to discuss these in more detail. One recommendation that came out of committee. The Economic Development Committee made a motion to recommend approval of project concepts with the amendment to have a study for future developments of the south side of Rock Hill and allow council to review and have additional discussions prior to sending it to Economic Development Board, which hasn't been established yet, for future work to include an expansion of the small business toolkit. Additionally, tonight, a request is made to refer to the Economic Development Committee, identification of high-growth areas in York County that may qualify for corridor studies and/or small area plans. And that's the end of our report. Coming with one recommendation to refer the last part of that recommendation back to committee to discuss, and that is to discuss corridor studies and small area plans throughout the county.
So...
Yeah.
So I know that the, there was a lot of discussion about how are we going to address the issues. The thing that I remember being reported out of, and recommended out of committee was that, that we approved the three, taking a look at those three initiatives as well as, and I don't, I have a different document. I know that the staff report wasn't circulated in the main report until later. So I'm not sure if you're, are you reading the staff report? Or are you reading, you reading the staff report?
I'm reading. It's in our packet.
The document I have, it has a little bit different wording, so I'm not sure if that was part of what was in there. But we didn't have access to the staff report before it was put out. I think the one thing that, just for council to understand, these three projects and taking a look at a study on the south side was really designed, study for the south side to attract high-quality investment as well as expanding the small business toolkit were the two items that were also recommended out of, out of that committee. One thing that I think it's important as we move forward is to make sure that folks understand that those five things that were approved and that were recommended out of that committee, the idea is that what would end up happening is this would give our Economic Development Director the opportunity to have the board, that once the ED board is constituted, to allow them to create subcommittees to, in order to build on this. And so that he has someone to help bring that. And anything that that ED board comes up with would have, still have to come back to council for approval, especially if there's any financing. But the main point, there's some wording on here that I didn't necessarily agree with, that it was somehow prioritizing an area. I know it was to do a study of the area that included partnerships with the folks in that group and for that ED board committee to work. So just so council understands, to the extent when we talk forward, these items will go to the ED committee, I mean, the ED board, once the board is constituted, in order to flesh that out. After having, that's the process that it will take. Recommendations will come from them, which will then come to us for approval. That way, it gives input from every district to have some input and also provides that line of direction back to us. So we're giving some direction and then the board comes back. The reason why I'm giving this whole big spiel is because I want to make sure council all understands that. But also, the request was made by Mr. Huckabee that we refer a new item back to the ED committee, that is to look at high-growth areas and to, to look at identifying and exploring, are there other areas that need a small area plan or a corridor study in order to address that? So that is what is being recommended to address a new issue at ED. And I certainly don't have an issue with that. So if there's no objection to referring that from the council, then we'll do that.
One thing real quick, I know we've talked a little bit about this. I think this is where the Planning and Zoning Committee has something to do with this as well. And I would just encourage council to think about that interaction because this is a topic that crosses both committees.
Agreed. So I think at some point, there may be either collaboration or, before we get too far along the field, we can do that. But, so that item, that new item will be referred to the ED committee for staff to help identify.
Yep.
Um, Public Works Committee meeting. Chairman Bump, Roddy.
Yep. So the Public Works Committee, we met July, Wednesday, July 30th, over at our beautiful York County Family Court Building, myself, Councilman Litten, Councilman Conjure met. We had the discussion about our upcoming project for our animal, animal facility, animal shelter, animal control facility. And we did give the marching order to staff. We got to get this number down around that $16 million mark, even though I think it still can be a little less than that. But that's kind of the high point of the threshold. We also talked about being kept up to speed on locations, need, and cost. Those are kind of the three major things that's going to drive this project. Looking forward to getting back over into a meeting to find out from our, what do we call the group that's going to lead the, lead the project? Owners rep? Yeah, Owners rep, to kind of prime the pump as to what can we expect. We got a potential timeline. We also heard from Animal Control Director. She kind of gave us an impromptu update as to how things were going. And one thing that I think we agreed in that meeting, myself, Andy, and Debbie, was that we have to look at ways to get funding to some of these rescues that help us keep these animals out of our shelters, from spay and neuter to helping getting food to people before they surrender their pet or helping with some shelter. Because it's a lot cheaper to keep them out of the shelter than it is the cost once we get these animals. So she's working on some things to try to come up with something that we can do for a council standpoint, even though we've already passed a budget. What can we do to get some resources to the people who are on the ground, out in the community, who are helping to try to curb some of the, whether it's abuse, whether it's neglect, whether it's, I just can't take care of my pets because of financial reasons? So we're going to be looking at some of those ways, some of those ways to combat the issue as well as while we're working through the steps to build a new animal control facility.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy. At the workshop, we did have a little bit of discussion on this. And just so, just to the extent that we need to make it clear, one of the things that we talked about doing was clarifying the commission to the Public Works Committee. We wanted to make sure that it included in that an evaluation of staff's proposed regulations relative to animal control specifically, to identify and make recommendations to council regarding cost-effective ways to address the overpopulation at the Animal Control Center. So that was discussed. The committee chair already agreed to make sure that that was included. And really, it's a balancing act that has to be done as to whether or not the cost justifies, justifies the work that's being done.
Right.
All right. Did you want to make a report out of FNO? I know you met.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I can go ahead and do that. So tonight, we had an FNO meeting, 5:30 tonight. Councilman Rodney and Atkins were there. Tonight, we passed several, approved several applications for committee seats, commissioned seats. And the first one was Lake Wiley Marine Commission. Michael Tucker for a first term was approved. The next one we had was for the Planning Commission. We approved James Wallace, District 6, for a first term. Bethandale Fire District, we approved two people, Paul Wise and also Joseph Simpson. Rock Hill, York County Airport Commission, we appointed or recommended Richard Simone. Let's see, Riverview Fire District, we did a recommendation for Probl. Michael Bennett and also Justin Roach. York County Forever, we approved for Jack Shuenite at a first, for a first term. And then Jennifer McAdams also for a first term. Zoning Board of Appeals, we approved Kyle Eller for a first term. And that was in District 2. And let's see here. Rock Hill, York County Convention and Visitor Center, Megan Nelson for District 1. And also, we approved Shannon Reed also to fill an expired seat. Lastly, we approved York County Cultural and Heritage Commission for Annie Laurie Wheat for a second term. We approved allocation of funds for District 4, for Love Cherish Food Pantry for the amount of $4,000. And also for District 7, Defend the Fall List for the amount of $5,000. We also did a review of finance.
Hold up. I think there was an approval of, I haven't, I'd asked that we defer the, I have it, I already have the disposition, what do we call them, discretionary funds approval? I think, I didn't know anything, anything about that. I'd like to defer that one.
It's coming out of my fund. It's not yours.
I thought this was my district.
District 7.
It's a district. No, it's, I think it just crosses the line on your district. I've given to that charity before, but you're welcome to give yours. I can move mine somewhere.
No, I'm fine with it. I thought you were talking, I thought y'all had committed the District 5 fund for that, so I wasn't aware of that.
It was a 50/50 split, so I talked to you.
I talked to you about that, too. I might not be opposed to it. I just didn't, it rang a bell. I was like, wait, that's mine. Thank you, sir. I'm glad we did do that.
Yeah, yeah, see, there you go.
I've just spent $2,000 of your money.
The things you learn when you go through that. But I do want to say again, with the financial update, the staff has done, Kevin has done a great job as far as aligning how we view the funding. And it's very easy to read, and we do appreciate that. So thank you, Kevin. Nice work.
Thank you. There was one other item that I wanted to make sure that I followed up on since we're on the committee and other reports section. This is something that we also talked at the workshop that was brought up as well. And I'm, Mr. Roddy has been very patient and very direct about his request that there be a look into District 4 for park gaps. And so to that end, I went back and looked and wanted to make sure that this referral was done appropriately. But, so the committee currently has, has the duty to evaluate and make recommendations regarding the existing, are we okay? I didn't know what that was, Mr. Madden. Let me start over. So the committee currently has the duty to evaluate and make recommendations regarding the existing master plan for parks. And so what we've decided and what was, what was included as part of that master plan was that in terms of capital expenditures, the focus is going to be to complete the existing projects that have already been identified and to, before beginning new capital projects. However, the master plan does also provide that council should be identifying service area gaps and specifically identifying land for acquisition for future needs. Specifically, so that's already in the master plan, so I don't know that we need to refer that. But I think to, to, to address what Mr. Roddy has requested, I don't see an issue with the committee going ahead and taking a look at that, but maybe specifically evaluate the acquisition in D4 as the first step in trying to take a look at that, to identify where the park, existing parks are and so that we can get moving on that piece. So to the extent that there's not an objection from any council member on that, we can, is there, I see you waving your finger over there.
One of the things the master plan does say is land acquisition, looking at land acquisition. I think you can do a broader charge related to that. That includes District 4. But I would want the committee to weigh in on the entire county as well because we haven't gotten to that yet. And so, so I do think there's potentially the need at some point for us to finish this study. You know, the study was really halfway there. I think what the committee, as they get back together, is going to recognize, which is what I've been talking to the members, is we need a consultant to look at the whole county and tell us what we should be doing in, in the lead-up to potentially building new parks. What land should we be conserving? Where? What can we do to get ahead of this so that we don't have to pay a high price for land when we know we need a park in a certain spot? But what can we do to get ahead of that? I think we need a consultant to come in and do a study of the entire county, not just one district. But I think you could have both conversations. I just want to make sure that the committee finishes the work that we started as well on the original charge.
That's what I recall being said at our last meeting when this came up about District 4, was completing Phase 2 of the master plan, Parks Master Plan.
I think, I think for purposes of the committee assignment, it's already in the master plan. I think that is something that, but I don't, I personally don't think we should have to hire a consultant for everything that we do. I think the committee can come in here and can, you know, take as a pilot, look, take a look at D4, look at that area, identify where there are gaps in park coverage and take a look at that issue. And I think this is for the committee to decide. The direction to the committee is to, is to look at that piece because as part of the, part of that, it does say identify the land. And, you know, there are, there are other options. There's existing funding that exists with preservation as well. So I just want to make sure that the committee chair and that the committee itself is, understands in that there's a clear charge to the committee at least.
Okay. Sure, committee.
The committee chair is, is good.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right.
I'm only committee. I'm not the chair, though.
Um...
I was the last year.
We do not have any citizen concerns. Do we have any council member, new non-agenda comment?
Yes.
Mr. Roddy.
I want to touch on, we talked about the parks. Obviously, there are no county on parks in D4, so that ought to be quick and simple. I've gotten a lot of calls here. I know it's a touchy subject about the rec funding that we just went through. I want, I want to make sure we get an update as to where we are with municipalities, how those negotiations are coming along. I know some municipalities have kind of opted out by some of the things that they've done, moving forward with their fall sports. But the ones who are looking to stay with us to receive that funding, I would like to know where we are with those conversations. And which bring me to a point that I've gotten some calls recently about, from parents and coaches who were coaching teams and had players that were from the unincorporated areas that paid a fee more than what the city resident paid. And I thought part of that agreement to receive the rec funding was that the municipalities had to charge county residents the same as city residents. Is that not part of what that agreement was?
Yes, but, but two cities have already opted out.
No, I'm talking about prior to opting out. If you go back last year and the year before, they were supposed to be charging county residents the same fee as city residents. I've gotten word and gotten receipts from parents who paid more for their child to participate, who lived in the county, who should have been charged the same fee as a city resident. And so that was kind of concerning that we had a municipality out here charging county residents more than city residents when the quote-unquote rec funding agreement, part of that stipulation was that they charged the same fee. So if we can do a little homework to find out if in fact this was going on, because I have a parent who says they have the receipts to where they paid more for a county resident to participate. And that goes, goes back to, to everybody being above board and fair with our agreement. So I would like to find out what can we see or what can we find out about that? Because that's not right if, if in fact they were doing that prior to opting out. Because if they did it last year, they were violating whatever the agreement was. Now, it's fine if they opted out this year and they can charge whatever they're going to charge, but that's, that's concerning.
We'll have to take a little bit of a second.
Yeah.
Any other council member, new non-agenda comments?
I do. I'd like to ask that, there is a study that stormwater folks are doing for Regent Park. And I would like to refer that to Public Works so that we can hear that, what they've got on their minds, and begin to, to look at a very important issue that we have in Regent Park because I know everybody else has these same issues that we're having with stormwater. So this is a beginning. And I'm very hopeful that we're going to get something moving that will really help with people that are having issues with flooding in their, for their homes. So can I recommend this to Public Works?
I think we, this is basically to report the contents of the study that was conducted and to, this was a recommendation that management asked for. Is that right?
This was going to come to y'all in a full council meeting, but as we discussed, we thought it made more sense to go to committee first. There's, there's natural next step conversations related to stormwater challenges we're seeing across the county, which I know many of y'all have brought up. So I think this is an example of that. And the question is, long-term, what are we going to do related to stormwater? So there's, there's a presentation, yes. And I think that starts with the Regent Park stormwater study that staff has, has developed. And stormwater staff can present that. But then I think there's a, okay, so now what? Question mark. and stormwater staff can present that. But then I think there's a, okay, so, so now what? Question mark for the committee to consider.
We also think the Planning and Zoning Committee is the appropriate committee, as called out in the county ordinances.
I'm sorry? I mean, I thought this was Public Works. We're talking about stormwater issue. I thought this was being referred.
So, the, uh, the actual infrastructure, we're talking about the live stream pipes, is something that Public Works takes care of. And so that's why this could be a Pub Works committee, but to the attorney's point, it could, county attorney's point, it could also be a Planning and Zoning Committee, but they have a lot in front of them too. So, that's, that's definitely up to y'all.
If it fits in either category, I mean, I guess the question is, my, my understanding was that management wanted to have that, I, referred to a committee. Do, do you want it in your committee or should we refer?
Is there a report to be given?
Well, it's going to have to be a lengthy year discussion and the whole point was not to have to have the full-blown discussion about that until there, there was a specific recommendation. It would give an opportunity for, for that instead of using a county council meeting to hear the, the.
Well, I have no problem with it coming, but if it's, if it gets to the point that I don't think it needs to be there once the discussion starts, we just kick it back out because I think.
That's fair. That's a fair point.
We'll, we'll get the initial report and see what, what they say.
Okay.
All right. All right. So, the matter will be referred to Public Works Committee? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roddy.
So, I have a second one. Um, I think that the time is right to, um, ask that this light industrial situation and industrial zoning, uh, be referred to Planning and Zoning and we begin hashing this next phase of our zoning problems and get it worked out. As Mr. Litten has several times commented and, uh, it's time to not put it, not sweep it under the rug any longer. Let's get, let's get the, uh, lovely situation out in the public, shine a full spotlight on it and see what we can do.
All right. So, the, the request is to refer, um, the light industrial, industrial, um, I guess use, use table discussion. That, I think the use table, uh, discussion probably narrows that up. Any objection to that being referred to Planning and Zoning? All right. It is done. Anyone else? All right. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, we do. Uh, receipt of legal advice, legal matter litigation update, and then also receipt of legal advice, contractual matter interstate exchanges.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All's favor say aye. Aye. We will move into executive session.
We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?